The April 1st meeting in the Anarundale County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite up at this time Doug Bond, who is the youth pastor at Lakeshore Baptist Church, to lead us in the invocation this evening. And Doug is from my district. He's also a personal friend. He was the pastor who married my wife and I, so thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I invite everyone to join me in prayer according to your own faith. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, God, we just thank you for this day, Lord. God, we thank you for the amazing things that are going on all around us, Lord, not just in our state, but our city, our county, our local communities, Lord. We are so grateful to be able to be part of a wonderful state of Maryland, Lord. And, Lord, we just know that you're going to continue to do great things through each person that's elected to serve, each person that's dedicated to their own community, Lord. And, Lord, we do pray for your presence here tonight, Lord. We just pray for your guidance and your direction for everything that's going to be discussed, everything that's going to be decided, Lord. And ultimately, we just pray that your will is done in each situation, Lord. Lord, we also thank you for each man and woman that has been elected to office to serve, Lord, and we just pray your blessing upon each one of them, both professionally and personally, Lord. We pray that you'll be with them and their families as they serve what you've called them to serve, Lord. We are so grateful, and we just, again, ask for your blessing on this meeting. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening once again. Madam Secretary, could you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission is asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission is asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We'll now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. We have the following person, or excuse me, following people who signed up. Alderwoman Rhonda Pindell-Charles, and I believe that is it. So if Alderwoman would come forward.
Good evening. Thank you so very much for this opportunity to your honorable council persons before this county council, to Chairman Pruski, to Vice Chair Pickard, to my personal county councilwoman, Raviya, and to my professional county councilwoman, Ms. Lacy. Good evening. I'm here just to testify regarding the proposed marijuana dispensary that is located, proposed to be located, 2029 West Street in Annapolis. And last week, I prepared a yellow folder for each one of you and presented that to Ms. Klein for each one of you, as well as to our legislative council, Ms. Tate. There was a very thorough and exhaustive 14-page legal brief prepared in support of opposition to requests for a denial of a license to operate a medical cannabis marijuana dispensary directly abutting my Ward III, City of Annapolis, 2029, West Street, Annapolis. And this was dated May the 8th, 2018, submitted to the Maryland Congressional Legislative Anarundale County and local elected officials. Also, a three-page letter dated March 18th, 2019, which continued our opposition, but also provided information regarding several very important and additional concerns. We have been publicly opposed to the location of this proposed marijuana dispensary since appearing on April the 6th before the administrative hearing officer armed with a seven-page legal document and maps at that point. Furthermore, I've been assured by the Maryland Medical Cannabis Commission via various email exchanges since our initial correspondence with them in May of 2018 that they are carefully reviewing our letters and emails from that time period. Our community would appreciate any support that you can provide to us regarding this very important issue. Thank you very much, Rhonda Pindell-Charles, Annapolis City Council, Ward III.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Oh, you didn't have a question? Okay. Anyone who did not sign up, if you'd come forward and take your name again, this is the invitation to audience. You can speak briefly on subjects not included in the printed agenda. Two minutes. Ms. Johnson, how are you this evening?
Oh, I mean, it's like this, that's good. On the right side of the bed. Good evening. Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I thought I would try to take a slightly different subject tonight. You deal with enforcement of the zoning codes, and you have the inspectors, and you get calls from your constituents about these things. So I was, you know, accused of, I think it's junk and debris, and so they filed a case. And there were a few things. First of all, I filed a request for a trial, because I contend I'm innocent, of course. And when I went to this hearing more recently, the judge noted that the writing for my name and address is different from my handwriting. And he asked the attorney for the county, it appears that someone from the county provided this name and address. And he said, "Well, I guess so," or he conceded that that was the case. So then, they sent me a letter with a notice of the trial date, and it's addressed, oh, did I say Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland at the beginning? There are some people who know my PO box is 6634, Annapolis, Maryland, but when they filled out this form, it's addressed to Julie Johnson, PO box, nothing, Annapolis, Maryland, and zip code. And it gives me a trial date and everything. Well, I tried to be compliant and stuff, but since I didn't get notice, I didn't attend. They found me guilty. They fined me $500 and $45 for court costs. And so I was a little bit upset when I found out that they were after me for $500 and so on and so forth. So it's an issue that I don't know if you'll hear it from any other constituent, but I thought I would let you know that I believe that I'm required to receive notice and an opportunity to defend.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Can you please summarize?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Pruski. I'm done, but I actually printed up stuff for you. I believe in saving trees, so I do it electronically, but I screwed up. And then, oh, and here's the copy. I only have a couple of copies of the citation, and it says, according to the clerk, RTS means "I refuse to sign." And I wouldn't refuse to sign.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member, like to place on the agenda? Before we do that, I wanted to let everybody know that the former councilman who served in my seat, Bill Burleson, passed away. It was in the paper a short time ago. And I just want to take a moment of silence for Mr. Burleson. For those of you who don't know, the garden, as you walk in, is actually named after him. He was a member of Congress, then served in my seat. But if we could just take a moment for his family on his passing. Thank you. May I have a motion that partial reading of any bill, resolution amendment to a bill or resolution or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So much.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? None. The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of March 18th, 2019.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Pruski at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Pickard. The pledge of allegiance was led by Boy Scout Troop 769 from Odenton, Maryland.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 18th, 2019? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of March 18th, 2019 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 2219, An Ordinance Concerning Second Amendment to Lease Agreement of Certain County-Owned Properties to the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anarundale County Incorporated. Bill Number 2319, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works, Heritage Harbor Condominium Phases 1 through 10 Water and Wastewater Petition Front Foot Benefit Assessment. Bill Number 2419, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel and Purchasing Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have, or may you please read the title of resolutions to be introduced this evening?
Resolution Number 1219, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarundale County, Anarundale Community College Funding. Resolution 1319, Resolution Appointing a Member to the Anarundale County Ethics Commission. Resolution Number 1419, Resolution Confirming Nominations to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anarundale County Incorporated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution 1119? Is there a second? Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution Number 1119 is passed.
Great. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Resolution 1119.
Resolution 1119, Resolution Approving the Application to Establish a BRAC Revitalization and Incentive Zone Within the Boundaries of Odenton Town Center.
Okay, is this the administration? I see we have some folks coming up. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Good evening. Pete Barron with the county executive. With me is Mr. Walker and Ms. Klaasmeier. We're here to talk about, that's the wrong 11. We're here to talk about the resolution before you, Resolution 1119. The base realignment enclosure that the federal government did has brought a lot of people to Fort Meade. This creates, actually doesn't create, it was previously granted in 2018, so this will renew the incentive zone. Mr. Walker will answer any tough questions, but just briefly, this will help us accommodate the influx of new folks who are still coming to our area due to the jobs that have grown at the fort. So this provides a fund that we can use for infrastructure and help us, help us grow the Odenton Town Center area. So, Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Barron, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate your time this evening. I'll just be brief and say thank each of you. I've reached out to you all individually and asked for any questions or feedback you had on this. I appreciate everyone getting back to me on their questions. I think hopefully those are all answered, and if you have any more, I'll be happy to take them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker. Anybody have any additional questions? All right, we're going to open this up for public hearing. It must be one or two minutes, but we do not have a... Sorry. The public hearing on Resolution Number 1119 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1119.
Resolution 1119, Resolution Approving the Application to Establish a BRAC Revitalization and Incentive Zone Within the Boundaries of Odenton Town Center.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Is there, I thought you were on for discussion.
Oh, I thought you were calling the rolls.
Any discussion? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 1119.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 1119 is adopted.
Boy, if every piece of legislation went that way, we would be done out of here early. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 719 as amended.
Bill Number 719 is amended, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Licensed Premises of Licensed Dispensaries, Growers, and Processors of Medical Cannabis.
Okay. Ms. Pickard is the sponsor. I don't know if you want to add anything additional?
Now I can call the questions.
Okay. Mr. Barron, the administration, anything else to add?
Nothing.
Okay. Seeing there's no other questions, we're now open to public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Let's check the sheet here. I do not see anyone on the list. Is there anybody who'd like to come forward and speak on 719? Okay. Seeing there's no movement in the audience, the public hearing is now closed on Bill Number 719. 719 is amended. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 719 as amended.
Bill Number 719 is amended, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Licensed Premises of Licensed Dispensaries, Growers, and Processors of Medical Cannabis.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the bill as amended? All right. We'll call the question. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Number 719 as amended.
Mr. Volkey?
If I may take a brief moment, Mr. Chair, to explain my vote. We've had extensive conversations about this particular piece of legislation over the past few months, and I appreciate the administration's willingness to answer questions, sometimes tough questions. And I also appreciate Councilwoman Pickard for putting this forward and obviously trying to rectify a situation that she sees that needs to be corrected in our county, so I applaud that. I will ultimately, I'm going to give away the surprise, be voting no on this bill for a number of reasons. I think that there are some very good provisions in this bill, and I believe that a number of my colleagues agree that some of these could have passed probably 7-0 through this council, but there are some other provisions in this bill that I have deep concerns about. I am extremely concerned about opening up the ability for licensed dispensaries to be locating in C1 districts. I'm also extremely concerned about lowering the distance requirements for some of the zoning requirements with this bill. I don't have a problem with the reinstitution of the variance process. I think that that actually worked decently well when it was in place. I also think that it is not a bad idea to allow products that are grown outside the county to be processed here. I think that helps Anarundale County growers and processors. Additionally, I'm not terribly concerned about the display provisions inside of the dispensaries being allowed, you know, to show customers the product that they're about to purchase. I would note that I had an opportunity to go back and review the administrative hearing officer's decisions as to each of the dispensaries that have been proposed in the county and some of the reasons for why these dispensaries were not passed. And I would note that with respect to the two that were not granted the ability to open because they were denied for variance requests, one of them was going to be located 55 feet from a multifamily dwelling, and in the other, it was going to be 160 feet from a dwelling and 200 feet from a residentially zoned property. And one of the things that struck me in the administrative hearing officer's decision was where he quote said, "To grant variances of," at this time, there was a 1,000-foot requirement, "815 and 800 feet to 1,000-foot distance requirement would gut the code." And so I'm not certain how this bill, as written and passed, is going to solve the problems that have allegedly been brought before this council to now lower from 1,000 feet to 750, which we have currently, and now to lower again to 500 feet. I'm just not convinced that this is going to solve the problem, and I don't like lowering the distance requirements toward houses. So for all these reasons, I'll be voting no, and while I appreciate the spirited debate and the ability of the administration and my colleagues to engage in this, I will be voting no.
Ms. Fiedler?
I'd also like to take a few moments. I had an opportunity to go tour one of the dispensaries in our county, Greenpoint Wellness. I was extremely impressed by this facility, how safe it was. I felt safer in there than any other secure location, and the amount of required requirements that they have to meet. I also believe it's important to have the option of medical cannabis for the various illnesses, pain, et cetera, that are listed in all of the studies. Where I'm hung up and continue to be hung up, and I think I've expressed this to Councilwoman Pickard, is C1, those commercial districts in communities. So for that reason, I am voting no on this bill, but I do appreciate Councilwoman addressing something that she felt strongly about.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
I will take also a couple of minutes just to address, I would like to echo the concerns that Councilman Volkey and Councilwoman Fiedler have stated. I think the, the display piece is, makes sense. It's a good piece of legislation. I think on the ability to process product from outside the county is also a good piece of legislation, and I do support those efforts. My biggest hang-up is that the way the bill is written, a home that is in a C2 or a C3 or an industrial zoning has no setback. And to me, that's, that's a concern. That's a big difference from what we had prior. So I, for those reasons, I will be voting no, but I also, I would just like to say that I think it's great that you've put so much effort into a piece of legislation you feel strongly about.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 719 as amended is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1019.
Bill Number 1019, An Ordinance Concerning Milburgh Special Community Benefit District.
Okay. And Madam Chair, we held the public hearing, and that is closed, the last meeting, but I do want to give the administration any final word, and I know this is, Mr. Volkey wants to add anything. Mr. Barron?
Just to remind everybody, the administration brings these special community benefit district bills down when the community has met the requirements. The petition has been reviewed by the Office of Law for sufficiency, and we have brought it before you.
Okay. Mr. Volkey, do you want to add anything?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to take a moment to thank Ms. Bray from the Office of Law for her detailed research that she did on this question. Obviously, this council had a number of hang-ups about the bill the last time it was in front of us at the previous meeting, and one of the key concerns and the key questions, I think for a number of us, was is there any way that this bill can be drafted or that certain parcels can be identified in such a way to exclude certain individuals that were not expressing either a willingness or that believed they should not have ultimately been part of this special community benefit district, whether there was a way to exclude them? And I appreciate the Office of Law going back and doing some very detailed research and coming forward with the conclusion that no, there is no way that that can be done. This is simply, it's an unfortunate situation, sort of the way that this has happened. There may be people who are not happy with the vote, but there is not a way to draft this legislation to exclude certain people on the basis of some contentions about whether or not they were adequately included in the community. With that, I would just note, obviously, if people have a problem with that, there are still private property rights, and there are potentially avenues that folks could look at, but with respect to what this council is being asked to do today, the question is, has there been a petition that has met the legal requirements and now has satisfied all of the statutory necessities and coming before this body, is it appropriate to be approved or not? So with that, I will be voting yes for this legislation, and I would urge my colleagues to join me. Thank you.
Any further discussion from the council? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1019.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
No.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 1019 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1119.
Bill Number 1119, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Classified Service, Detention Officers Pay Increase.
Mr. Barron and the crew, this is your...
Good evening. Pete Barron with the county executive. As you will recall, we discussed this legislation at the work session. I have, joining me at the table, I should not neglect to introduce them, Ms. Harold, Ms. Lays, and Ms. Klaasmeier. They're here to answer all the tough questions as usual. As you recall from the discussion at the work group, there's a large number of vacancies in detention. The previous administration raised the salaries for starting detention officers effective September 24th, 2018, to $44,341. This change of scale impacted 35 detention officers who were hired before that date and now are making less than that amount of money, $44,341. The purpose of Bill Number 1119 is to increase those detention officers to the salary scale of their colleagues. As we address our recruitment and retention issues at detention, this is a very important piece, making sure that folks are respected and treated fairly as their colleagues. The impact is annualized about $75,000 to the county with a fiscal year impact of $56,000. This can be satisfied within current budget for FY19. The question came up in the work session about overtime expenditures. One of the issues that we do see at detention is a number of officers who have to work overtime. Just to give some context, and not saying that this bill will solve every problem, but our overtime expenditures in FY17 were 1.6 million and change. In FY18, we're 2.6 million and change. So recruiting and retaining quality detention officers is incredibly important, and this bill is another step, and the previous administration deserves credit for taking the first step, and this bill closes that loophole accidentally that left some folks behind.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Any initial questions? All right. We're going to open this up for public hearing. Remarks are limited to two minutes. We do have Mr. Dale Waldroff signed up. If you'd come forward, please.
Dale Waldroff, 876 Claffey Avenue, Gambles, Maryland. I am the very proud president of the Detention Officer and Corporal Ranks. I'm here to ask for your support. Vote yes. This is a very important bill. When I started coming here in September, we were approximately 50 short. Right now, we're about 43. Should be, we're allocated, per the allocation, is 242. Right now, we have, it's 199. This bill will bring those officers up. I wish we'd got this bill in sooner, but here we are, and I'm grateful for it. For the last four years, you know, we've been talking about the budget, we've talked about the staffing shortfalls, you know. I'm sorry, I lost myself. Apologize. Those staffing shortfalls have been made up by overtime, as was discussed just a moment or so ago. In many cases, this is done by mandatory overtime. Last year alone, I had officers that were getting, out of a six-day work week, they were getting stuck two, three, and unfortunately, in a lot of cases, four times in a given work week. Obviously, that has issues with the, with at-home as well. Also, because of staffing, a lot of, a lot of times when we have different hospital runs, court runs, things like that, it's done with single officer. Should always be done with two, for safety's sake, but a lot of times we have it, it's done with a single officer. I won't digress, you know, it's pretty academic, but again, I ask you to vote yes on this. I'm going to leave you a copy of what I had planned really to read, but I don't think you want me to sit here and just read things verbatim. I'm also going to give you, give you all a list of just information on corrections in general. But again, I thank you for your time, and I thank the administration, as well as the previous administration as well, for upping the starting salary.
Thank you, Mr. Waldroff.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone who did not sign up and wished to speak the public hearing on Number 1119? Ms. Johnson, anyone else, please come forward.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I support this bill. I support, you know, the, well, I support the bill and the sponsors and the efforts. The reason that I'm testifying is that sometimes I complain, and I think it's important for you to understand that I try to have a balanced view. I've asked you to, you know, now that you've been elected, that you work together, because, you know, working together, we get farther, and the more we can understand one another, the more likely we're able to reach a genuine consensus that meets the needs of the public. And in this case, you know, I complain about spending money, but it's penny wise and pound foolish to, you know, run up such a high bill in overtime. And I... in overtime. And I have a real compassion for people who work shifts. They are killers, and if you have to work overtime, it is really, really hard. And we need people to be 24/7/365. And that, that alone is a heavy burden, and we need to be compassionate with the people we hire. We have duties to the people we hire, and we are grateful for their doing their job well. And I'll just give you one example, you know, Dale mentioned the idea of taking, taking a inmate, you know, in a vehicle, you know, to get medical care. Well, if there's an accident and it's, you know, the employee who's injured, you know, he can't come to the aid of the inmate who's locked up, you know, and if he's, you know, I'm not saying this, but I apologize. You get the picture, that the detention employee needs to be able to assist, you know, the prisoner who is being transported. I apologize for garbling about, but I think...
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
That's it. I support the bill, and I thank you for being concerned about the people who try to protect us.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. The public hearing on 1119 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1119.
Bill Number 1119, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Rights of Classified Employees, Limitations on Joining Employee Organizations, Deputy Sheriff Three.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1119.
Bill Number 1119, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Rights of Classified Employees, Limitations on Joining Employee Organizations, Deputy Sheriff Three.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1219.
Bill Number 1219, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Rights of Classified Employees, Limitations on Joining Employee Organizations, Deputy Sheriff Three.
Mr. Barron?
Evening again, Pete Barron with the County Executive. With me at the table again is Ms. Harold and Ms. Klaus Meyer. We also discussed 1219 at the work session. If you recall, this is a small group of deputy sheriffs who do not have the right to collectively bargain, unlike similarly situated peers in the Police Department or the Fire Department. So this administration strongly supports everybody's right to collectively bargain. This will affect two lieutenants in the sheriff's office, and we need a change in county code to facilitate it. So with that, we hope you will support the bill.
Councilman Volkey?
Mr. Barron, was it a unanimous vote?
I believe it would have to be.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, it would have been a tie.
All right, seeing no other initial discussion, now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do not have anyone signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on Bill 1219? Yes, sir.
I am Brian Andre. I'm a lieutenant with the...
Can you give your address as well?
3594 Font Tron Drive, Edgewater. It was unanimous. There's two of us. This has been a long time coming. I appreciate the County Executive Office taking this into consideration. We should have done this a long time ago. We're a 70-person agency where lieutenants often have to take law enforcement action right alongside deputies and sergeants serving warrants, serving protective orders. And to have the benefit of having a union and legal representation, should we get into a critical incident or situation that requires legal representation, it's, I think it's just much needed, especially in this day and age. The other half is bargaining. Right now, I'm with, as an unrepresented county employee, I get a raise the same as a record supervisor, or, you know, the only other law enforcement in that group are your captains with the county police, and the non-reps, and I don't think we belong there. I think we belong, the right to bargain for our right and to have a chance to tell the county what we do, how we do it, and, you know, how we should have that right to bargain. So I thank you guys all. Thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you for your time. The public hearing on Number 1219 is now closed.
Edgewater.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1219.
Bill Number 1219, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Rights of Classified Employees, Limitations on Joining Employee Organizations, Deputy Sheriff Three.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1219.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 1219 is passed.
Congratulations to the both of you. Bill 1319, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1319.
Bill Number 1319, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate School Facilities, Mead Village.
Okay, Ms. Lacy is the sponsor. I don't know if you'd like to start, and then the administration.
I'm happy for us to hear from the administration first.
Okay. Mr. Barron and the crew?
Pete Barron with the County Executive. With me at the table is Mr. Swain and Mr. Hager. Just, we discussed this bill at work session. Want to thank the sponsor for putting it in. I think it's a reasonable solution to a issue that is unfortunate, and this helps address a need and will allow us to build the development, the one building, I should say. Just for context, one thing that has stuck with me since the work session is that we have a waitlist of over 9,000 households, if that's correct.
I think it's over 12,000.
Is it 12,000?
Perhaps Mr. Martin will come down and let us know, but I think it's over 12,000.
It's a, this will build 24 units, right?
Correct, and renovate the existing 200 units.
Yes.
And here's Mr. Martin, who can answer.
Yes.
There we go.
Yes, Clifton Martin, CEO Housing Commission, Anarondale County. The waitlist as of today is 12,455 families for Mead Village.
So we have a great need in this county, and this is a small step forward. And I want to thank the sponsor for putting it in, and we will hope, the administration hopes you will vote favorably on this bill.
Ms. Lacy, did you want anything else, or?
I'll just say that I appreciate very much the work of the Housing Authority of Anarondale County to really clarify what the specific legislative need was, both factually, because if you only knew that this bill was going to just allow the renovation of 200 units and build 24, then you might not think that it does very much, but its impact is actually going to be far beyond the physical impact. It's about what it does to the condition of the housing that we have available, and the fact that, you know, that our waitlist for these houses and homes, residences, is so high, I hope will sink in for each of us as we go forward, because while I'm very proud to sponsor this bill and to have helped everyone kind of work out what would be a good solution, my heart is still broken that we could possibly have a list that long, and we have a lot more work to do. But I thank you for supporting this bill and really understanding what the kernel of decision needed to be in this case, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We'll now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes for Bill 1319. I see Ms. Johnson coming forward. I had nobody signed up.
Julie Johnson, PO 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I want to thank Councilwoman Lacy for her concern and, you know, dedication to people who really are in a desperate situation, but that, much more important, I came forward because I want to mention to you that there's an ongoing problem in some of the communities. Some of the builders and developers snicker about a legal technique they use. They call it creative deed construction. And in creative deed construction, if you need 7,500 square feet for a, one home in our, well, I'll make it simple. If you need two acres of land and you have three acres, well, what you do is you create a septic easement of one acre, and so each, each property winds up magically acquiring the use of the subsoil of the adjacent property. And so each one qualifies for two acres. Now, clearly, that's not so subsidized housing, but I'm trying to make the arithmetic simple. And they snicker about this. They completely, in my opinion, it's a deliberate intention to circumvent the restrictions on excessive development. And so what happens is, a property that would be affordable now becomes, in the one instance that I'm familiar with in the past year, some land sold for a grand total of about $280,000. They're going to build four houses on this, and the starting price, according to the sign, is low 490s. They bought it for, you know, for under $400,000, you know, or excuse me, for under $300,000.
Ms. Johnson, please summarize.
So my concern is, I appreciate, or I'm here to ask you, you know, to think about watching what else is going on that's depleting the stock of affordable housing for so many people in the county where there's such a desperate need. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. The public hearing on Bill Number 1319 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1319.
Bill Number 1319, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate School Facilities, Mead Village.
Any further discussion? Before we do that, though, I do want to state, Mead Village used to be in District 4 prior to me running for office, and I certainly support this bill, and I appreciate Councilwoman Lacy and the administration. It's a really needed project, and I just want to get that as a part of the record. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 1319.
Mr. Volkey?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, I have some concerns about this bill. I will ultimately be voting for it because the school system has come in and indicated that they do not have any concerns about the capacity issues that will come about from this development. But I do just want to note that this is obviously exempting a residential development from one of the most stringent tests that we have in this county, which is frankly, school capacity. So I think that that's relevant to be stated on the record, and obviously, you know, the purpose for doing this is to provide some affordable housing, and I think that that might be the reason why this is ultimately going to pass. But I just want to note that I have reservations about this, and I do have some concerns about where this leads us down the road. But with that, I will be voting yes on this bill.
Shall I call the roll now?
Yes, please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye, sorry.
I'm sorry. Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
A comment I'd like to make in response to my colleague. I think one of the things that actually is, is a very good aspect of this bill is that I worked very closely across the administration and also with, with Mr. Sheknovich, to ensure that what we crafted would not contribute to the possibility of precedent that would be used in a way to sort of pack our school districts or otherwise increase any sort of inequities that we already have plenty of in our system, and frankly, was the most important thing that I ran on in my, in my campaign, was in reducing those inequities. So we looked at this very, very closely, and I'm glad you voted in support of it, but I wanted to make clear that that is, that is, for the record, not the intent of this bill, and of course, I vote aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 1319 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1419.
Bill Number 1419, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Farm Breweries, and Residential Districts.
Councilwoman Fiedler is the sponsor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This bill addresses a discrepancy in our code between farm breweries and farm wineries as conditional uses in residentially zoned areas, and was an issue that I became aware of from a farmer in my district. There is still a working farm in District 5. Our current code allows wineries as conditional uses in RA, RLD, R1, and R2. Current code allows farm breweries as conditional uses in RA only. Understanding that the properties that would qualify for this use are assessed as ag uses and are active farms, this bill is a small step to support farm breweries. It only adds RLD and R1 as conditional uses for farm breweries, requires vehicle access to be from minor arterial roads or a higher classified road, and limits special events in R1 to Saturdays, Sundays, and federal holidays. I believe this bill is a reasonable zoning change that allows farm breweries similar opportunities as wineries, would support our local economy, would have limited impacts on residential zoned areas, and preserves our county farms instead of subdividing parcels for residential development. That is all.
Okay, the administration?
Thank you, and I want to thank the councilwoman. We've been having conversations up until about we walked in here. I think the administration strongly supports the intent. We do want to make sure that these businesses are able to thrive. I think there have been some serious concerns raised. I know there have been some amendments floated. It doesn't look like one will be offered today. So with that, as the bill is drafted, we have some concerns specific to R1, and unless I'm missing any amendments...
For the record, I am withdrawing the amendment.
Okay.
Until further discussion is had based on recent maps.
Yeah, I mean, I think we would respectfully ask that we hold the bill to have those conversations. We, we would like to work them out and think this bill, we can work these issues out, but as drafted, we can't support it at the moment.
Okay, if it's all right, before we go to questions, I was going to the public hearing, but if people want to ask questions, no?
I have a question.
Okay.
What specifically is the administration concerned about with respect to R1? Because I had some concerns about that, too, and I'm trying to find out if the concerns are the same or if they differ from what the administration's worried about.
I think just R1 in particular, they are in, you know, it's a residential area. There's a couple of maps that have been floated around. There's a lot of parcels across the county, and if you look at, there's a map on 38, should be in your packet, I think.
The most recent one I have is from 401, and it looks like the majority of them are in my district, actually, down almost toward Gibson Island, and it looks like there may be one down off College Parkway and another one that's down in South County.
Is that the map? That's the map with the 19 parcels?
Yeah, this is the map with R1 zone parcels, 10 acres or greater with agricultural assessment, so they would have the component to be able to locate them.
Right, as I read the bill, that requirement that it's agriculturally assessed does not exist.
Okay.
So if that was added, that might go a long way to...
So that's what the administration's looking for?
That's one of the concerns. I think also whether 10 acres is the right level, I think we need to have that discussion.
Okay. Does planning and zoning have any input on whether that's the right threshold? I guess that's the way to describe it. I don't know. I see Ms. Rhodes.
Lori Rhodes, Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer. I spoke at the work session and indicated that R1 is intended for single-family dwellings.
Sure.
Even though I realize wineries are allowed as a conditional use as well. I was making the distinction between those uses based on the types of activities and everything that's spelled out in the bill, and I wanted to protect the integrity of the R1 district and look for some opportunities to increase the size of the district from 10 to 12.
I think just R1 in particular, they are in, you know, it's a residential area. There's a couple of maps that have been floated around. There's a lot of parcels across the county. And if you look at, there's a map on 38, should be in your packet, I think.
The most recent one I have is from 401, and it looks like the majority of them are in my district, actually, down almost toward Gibson Island. And it looks like there may be one down off College Parkway and another one that's down in South County.
Is that the map? That's the map with the 19 parcels?
Yeah, this is the map with R1 zone parcels, 10 acres or greater with agricultural assessment. So they would have the component to be able to locate.
Right. As I read the bill, that requirement that it's agriculturally assessed does not exist.
Okay.
So if that was added, that might go a long way to.
So that's what the administration's looking for?
That's one of the concerns. I think also whether 10 acres is the right level, I think we need to have that discussion.
Okay. Does planning and zoning have any input on whether that's the right threshold? I guess that's the way to describe it. I don't know. I see Ms. Rhodes.
Lori Rhodes, Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer. I spoke at the work session and indicated that R1 is intended for single-family dwellings, even though I realize wineries are allowed as a conditional use as well. I was making the distinction between those uses based on the types of activities and everything that's spelled out in the bill, and I wanted to protect the integrity of the R1 district and look for opportunities to increase the size of the district from 10 to perhaps 20.
So that's what the administration would be looking for, is 20 acres as opposed to 10?
Well, we thought 20 acres would make sense. There's also been some discussion about going to special exception from 10 to 20, which would allow some community input in those smaller parcels.
Before we move forward, Ms. Tate, I know wants to say something.
No, just as a follow-up to Councilman Volkey's question, in reference to the activities at a winery, what are the distinctions between a winery in R1 and a farm brewery in R1 that are of concern? Because wineries, under the state code, can have promotional events all year long, just like farm breweries. So what is the activity that generates a concern at a farm brewery versus a winery in R1?
Well, the zoning code, which is going to be the overarching regulator of this use, does not list those activities, whereas the farm brewery does.
So the farm breweries actually would have a restriction where the wineries do not? Because they can go get 12 three-day permits to have a winery event promotional, that is my understanding, under the state license. And there is no restriction for wineries whatsoever for what they can do on their property, whereas the farm breweries are here, according to what Councilman Fiedler said, are acceding to these additional requirements in order to locate R1. So essentially, the wineries are getting a preferential treatment under the zoning code that the breweries are not. So that's what I'm, that's the source of my question.
And I understand. And unfortunately, we do not have an example of an R1 property with a winery. The existing wineries in Anarondale County are on property zone RA and RLD. So we try to anticipate what adverse impacts could potentially come about on an R1 zone property, which is intended for single-family.
And if I may add, Phil Hager, Planning and Zoning Officer, just by way of a possible avenue towards coming closer to a piece of legislation that everyone would feel more comfortable with, utilizing the agricultural assessment as an additional filter might be a way to also help us get to where we all want to be. That's an independent agency that's doing an assessment that's going to require that the activities taking place on there already constitute agricultural activities. The opportunity for friction between neighbors would be ameliorated substantially because the people there are already accustomed to agricultural activities taking place. So that might be a way that we could, again, look at a compromise aspect of this, just you would include in the amendment discussion the requirement to there being agricultural assessments tied to the eligible properties.
Ms. Tate, did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to know if that was going to also be added for wineries, since we're talking about parity here.
That wasn't proposed at this time. That may be a discussion that one of the council members may wish to bring up. But what, the legislation was focused on breweries, so there was no recommendation from the Office of Planning and Zoning with regards to wineries.
Councilwoman Fiedler, and then Councilman Volkey.
This is just a comment. When I was knocking on doors, I didn't hear once, "Please stop the growth of our farms." What I did hear was, "Please low development." So when I have a farm in my district, or any farm in the county, for that matter, who wants to diversify their property? They want to grow their business. I think that we need to consider and support that versus subdividing and adding 20 homes to a peninsula.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess my sort of follow-up question, and I don't mean this to sound flippant, so please don't take it that way, but I am trying to understand exactly how, when planning and zoning looks at these things, that some of these threshold determinations are made. So I remember when we were talking about the medical cannabis bill, and I had a question about how did we arrive at 500 feet, and one of the discussions I had with Mr. Barron, and the planning and zoning chimed in on, I think it was actually the same panel, was about how that decision was made, how that 500-foot, and basically the takeaway was, well, it seemed reasonable. I guess I'm trying to understand how 10 acres would be unreasonable, but 20 acres would be reasonable when I'm noting maybe 17, I think it's 17 parcels that would qualify in the entire county for this. So I guess I'm just not sure how that sort of threshold determination's made, and I would love any insight that I can get.
Okay.
Again, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to add one thing. I think, Councilman Volkey, I don't believe the bill as drafted is just the 19 parcels, unless I'm reading.
Right, the agricultural piece of it is what we're talking about.
Correct, correct.
Understood. Sorry, I should have caveated that. Once we get the agricultural piece, it still sounds like, even if that was put in, the agricultural assessment, that's still not going to be enough. The administration would still be looking to go from 10 to maybe 20. So I'm just trying to figure out how that determination is made.
I think we just need, and I'm going to let them answer, but I think we do need a little bit of time. And the idea of the agricultural assessment was brought to me at about 3:00 today.
Yeah, and I think as long as there's parity on that, that might make sense. I guess, I'm just trying to understand sort of these threshold determinations of how we pick which parcels are appropriate and which aren't.
And now I'll stop interrupting.
Thank you. No offense, Mr. Barron.
Because zoning is the implementing tool of the general development plan.
Sure.
That was the nexus of my comment, because R1 is intended for single-family dwellings. And when you start to commercialize a low-density residential use, you want to try to anticipate what those adverse effects could be. Because we have not had that, wineries in R1, do you continue to extend these type of commercial uses into a zone where the corresponding land uses single-family?
Well, and to tack onto that, so RLD also allows for some houses to be built.
Right. RA and RLD in the general development plan is intended for farm rural uses, which encourage economics for farming.
And what about sort of for locating commercial enterprises on those RA and RLD properties? I'm thinking of these wineries already. I mean, some of them may be doing some pretty substantial business. So I guess, at what point do you move away from this idea of residential and farming, and now you've commercialized the enterprise? And I guess that's a concern that I think is an overarching concern for me on not just wineries and breweries, but all kinds of things.
Well, 10 acres, in my opinion, is a small-sized farm, whereas 20 is typically the size that would allow for an amount of space that would mitigate some of the noise and things that could occur when it's in an R1 district. That's why I was looking for an opportunity to perhaps have the acreage increased.
Okay.
To ameliorate that.
Thank you.
And Mr. Volkey?
Yes?
You have put your finger on a very critical issue that is something that's receiving a lot of attention right now by the Upper Limits Subcommittee of the Agritourism Commission.
Okay.
It's the aspect, it's certain aspects of agritourism and agricultural activity sometimes find their way into the definition of activities that may be described as non-residential or commercial or industrial. And it's partly the nature of what agricultural activities involve. And that's one of the difficult things with all things, trying to make things fit within definitions and parameters that are set forth in a zoning ordinance.
Sure.
And at the same time, trying to respect people's property rights and trying to respect the idea that we're trying to keep agricultural viable business in the county. And all these things are very difficult to balance.
I think we're going to talk about this again.
Yeah, as Mr. Barron suggests, I think we can talk about this and come up with something that works.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before we go to Councilwoman Pickard, Councilwoman Lacy, just a point of information, there are no amendments on the floor. I know there's been some debate and discussion, but the current motion is the legislation as written right now. So I just want to make that clear. Councilwoman Pickard?
Well, that was going to be my question. Are we going, are we, should I make the motion to hold this bill?
We have to have the public hearing first.
Oh, okay.
Councilwoman Lacy?
Well, I'll save my comments then. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rodvian?
I have another question for this panel. What is it about, I definitely understand the concern about, you know, increased activity in a residential, for residentially zoned property, even if it's an R1, which has, you know, got a lot more elbow room. But doesn't the arterial road requirement mitigate some of that?
Yes, I mean, it will mitigate some of that, but you always have to anticipate that there could be a strip of lots that are but an arterial road that are zoned R1.
Okay.
So you always have to assume that that could occur.
That's a possibility. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Great, thank you all. We'll now open the public hearing. Mark's be limited to two minutes. I do have someone who signed up ahead of time, Jana Holly. Ms. Jana Holly, if you'd come forward, please. And then we'll open it up to others. You state your name and address in two minutes. Thank you.
Jana Holly, 1553 Ritchie Lane, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm with Grow and Fortify. We represent the Brewers Association of Maryland, the Maryland Distillers Guild, and the Maryland Wineries Association. We applaud the council's decision to bring county farm brewery zoning more in line with county winery zoning, permitting farm breweries in zones R1 and RLD. This creates more opportunity to allow agricultural operations to add farm breweries as an accessory use, which gives farms the additional economic opportunity to sell a value-added agriculture product directly to the public. Anarondale County has shown through establishing agritourism legislation that it supports farm operation flexibility and recognizes the social and economic importance of public farm access. As a result, we would like to recommend a few changes to the proposed text amendment. Number one, to maintain a consistent 10 acres for all farm breweries regardless of the zone. This is how farm wineries are treated in the county, and we would like to see parity between the two, as has already been discussed. We'd also like to see a removal of the restriction of Saturday, Sunday, and federal holidays only for planned promotional events for farm breweries, to bring it into parity with what farm wineries are allowed to do. Unlike wineries, because breweries also exist in manufacturing, industrial, and Main Street areas, there seems to be a perception that they're kind of all like this monolithic type of business, which they most definitely are not. Farm breweries are very different. And neither is a farm brewery more commercial than a farm winery. Both have a requirement to grow agricultural ingredients on site, and the processing of these ingredients into their respective craft beverages is almost identical. The footprints and the needed infrastructure are not substantially different at all for a farm brewery and a farm winery or a farm distillery. Additionally, brewery planned promotional events are no larger or no more disruptive than winery ones. Both can host activities appropriate to their size and scale. We support 1490 overall and look forward to continually working with the council. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it. Is there anyone who did not sign up that would like to come forward? I saw Ms. Chaney, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else? Last call for Bill 1519? Excuse me, 1419. If you would come forward, and I know Madam Secretary will have a sign and she for you, name and address, and two minutes.
I guess I'll go first. Andrew Suprzynski, 492 Brunneck Road, Annapolis, Maryland. Just want to give a little personal touch to this bill. My family zoned our farm for over 100 years now, and in that time, we've seen the Brunneck Peninsula grow from predominantly agricultural to what it is today, which is mostly residential. And in that process, through the planning and zoning reference to general development plan, our property came to be zoned R1, not because of any effort on our part, just as part of a growth of the county itself. And I think that, to us, we would like to continue to farm, and this bill would provide an extra revenue stream for our farm to continue to grow. Thank you.
Hello. Hi, I'm Anna Chaney, 5801 Brooks Woods Road, Lothian, Maryland, Honey's Harvest Farm. I also serve as the chairperson for the Agriculture, Agritourism, and Farming Commission. And I sent everyone a letter today. Hopefully, you received that, the council folks. I do thank you all for allowing us to be here tonight and always supporting the agriculture that makes sense in our county. I think this bill has a lot of merit, and I know it's going to undergo a few more conversations. I think that generally speaking, agriculture is a very important resource that we have in our county, and I do appreciate the support. I think diversification is key. I drive past their farm on a regular basis, and it's great to see the one last standing farm in that area, and to allow them to diversify would be fantastic in this. And I do think parity is very important. I think the wineries should not be given preferential treatment, and I think that the breweries should have the same treatment as the wineries. I think there are no complaints in our county regarding wineries, and we think we make many of our decisions based on fear of complaints. I think it is very low impact. And as my son noticed, when we walked down West Street in Annapolis, the quietest place on the whole street happens to be Chesapeake Brewery. So I want to make sure that we're not expecting some, you know, crazy thing that's very disruptive. And I do think that in R1, it's very applicable, especially in the case of Mr. Suprzynski. And Jana was going to finish hers. She wanted to note, and by the way, Grow and Fortify are all over the state, so when Jana speaks, I listen, because they have more collective information than any other entity in the state of Maryland with regards to agriculture and agritourism. So if you have any practical questions about the impact in other counties, please refer to Jana and Kevin. They're fantastic. I have 14 seconds left. So statewide, our 14 licensed farm breweries and 10 breweries and planning are farms first and breweries second. The majorities have significant agricultural operations, including livestock, corn, hay, wheat, soybeans, vegetable, and fruit production, and hops. So there you have it. Thank you so much.
Ms. Johnson?
Hi, Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. When my ex and I were first married, we visited a number of breweries. Coors in Colorado, Potrige in St. Louis, the one in Baltimore, the one in Dublin, which is Guinness. And it became clear to me that they use a lot of water. And Anarondale County is really blessed with really good water resources. But over my decades in this county, there are some places where there have been concerns about saltwater intrusion, where you're pulling out a lot of water. And so one of the questions I would ask you to consider for addition into the bill or insertion into the bill is some sort of a provision that you identify the volume of groundwater that is being pulled out, simply because, like with swimming pools, it's a lot of water. And in the future, there is really a serious concern, but we're already, you know, using more water than we're putting back into the ground. And there is a time when the well will run dry. So I'm not opposed to breweries, you know, and so on. But I think the water issue is really important, especially where there are other people who are drawing from those same resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Before you leave, sir, we have the GDP coming up. So you said you had R1, so you would be opposed to going to RA or RLD?
I'm not the property owner, so I wouldn't be able to speak.
Gotcha, okay. All right, thank you. All right, any further questions? All right. The public hearing on 1019 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1019. Or 1419, I'm sorry.
Bill Number 1419, an ordinance concerning zoning farm breweries in residential districts.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes. I do think that I need to have some more discussions with the administration and my colleagues, and review some maps, and explain the ESTAT assessment process. So for that reason, I am motioning to hold this until our next meeting on April 15.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Piersky?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill 1419 to April 15 is adopted, passed.
Okay, thank you again. Once again, this will be heard on Monday, April 15. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1519.
Bill Number 1519, an ordinance concerning private disposition of county-owned property located along Maryland Route 214 at Maryland Route 648 in Edgewater, Maryland.
Mr. Barron, it looks like you have some folks coming up, so we'll wait till they get seated.
Good evening. Pete Barron with the county executive. With me is Ms. Henry, Mr. Anderson, and Ms. Neer. We discussed 1519 at the work session. This is, and there should be a map in your packet, which shows the property transfer. So this 1519 authorizes the county to transfer some property along Route 214 and 468 in Edgewater to the Maryland State Highway Administration. We've completed the road widening and other improvements in the area. The intersection is within the. The intersection is within the SHA, the State Highway Administration's right-of-way, and we are required to donate the property over to SHA at no cost to allow for the maintenance of improvements. This conveyance is consistent with the purposes for which we acquired the property, and per county code, the council has to act to transfer property in this manner. So, with that, you know, I think these road improvements are important, and now that they're complete, we want the State Highway Administration to be responsible for the maintenance. So, with that, hopefully you will move favorably on this piece of legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Councilwoman Hare, I believe this is your district. Again, courtesy, do you have any reservations or anything?
I actually just had one question that came to me now, because we recently saw the report from DPW on the potential road improvements along 214. Would this conveyance hinder at all or otherwise change any potential impacts based on that traffic study?
I'm going to defer to the folks at the table. I thought I did. Ms. Henry or Mr. Anderson, probably answer that, and Ms. Nederer is from Office of Law.
Okay.
Hi, Dan Anderson, Department of Public Works. I don't see an issue with that. Right now, when we initiated the project, we did use State Highway right-of-way to build upon. It's anything that expands beyond that footprint, and that's the purpose of this legislation tonight, is convey that. So, I don't see as a hindrance, any developer that would do a project like some type of off-site or frontage improvement would also use that right-of-way, and similar to this bill tonight, they would have to convey any land that was needed for the ultimate footprint that was decided upon.
Okay, but so, like the proposal to add, you know, emergency shoulders or anything like that, that would not be hindered by this?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Not as far as the wire. We would have to get, you know, again, it would have to be permitted by the State Highway Administration.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Seeing no further questions, let's open this up for the public hearing. Bill 1519, anyone like to come forward to speak on this? I had no one signed up. I don't see any movement in the audience. Public hearing on Bill Number 1519 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1519.
Bill Number 1519, an ordinance concerning private disposition of county-owned property located along Maryland Route 214 at Maryland Route 468 in Edgewater, Maryland.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill.
Wait, wait, sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to just double-check whether in Section 1 of the bill at line 27, where it says, "See Exhibit B attached here too," should that say Exhibit A? Or is there a reference to Exhibit A that I've missed? Because as far as I can tell, everything attached past the slip sheet labeled Exhibit A, Bill Number 1519. There is, there is an Exhibit B as well. Where is it? I'm sorry. Keep going. It's here. I'm sorry, but where's the reference to Exhibit A? That's what I can't find.
Line, yeah, line 13.
Line 13 on page 1.
Thank you very much. I've got that part, it's this part, thank you.
Any further questions, discussions? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 1519.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Trupuski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 1519 is passed.
Is there any other business you brought for the county council? Seeing no motion or movement?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourns are a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Monday, April 15. Have a good evening, thank you.